We're going to call the Tuesday, July 5th, 2016 Manassie City Council Meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. Can you please take the roll? Here. Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Planning and zoning Administrator.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens and comments on agenda-related items. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to comment on tonight's agenda? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Judy Carl. My address is 159 Quincy Street, our summer resident. I'd like to mention two items on the agenda. The first topic on the agenda is the Lighthouse Park. While I commend the residents who have worked to resolve the contamination issue at the park, both the need for individuals to take this action and for the need to solicit donations to maintain the park is just another example of the city's fiscal irresponsibility. Ironically, while the city has no money to maintain the current park structure, the capital improvement plan indicates a plan to expand the parks within the city. The second issue I'd like to comment on is the issue of the city's efforts in finding volunteers to serve on the city's boards and commissions. On today's agenda, there are 13 vacant positions. Two applications have been received, one of which is already a person who is in the comment. I wish to share an encounter which I had, which points to a reason why some residents will not come forward and volunteer on city committees or boards. Here's my example that happened last committee meeting, council meeting, which was on June 21st. My brother and I were riding up on the elevator when it stopped for others entering on the first floor. Coming into the elevator was a city committee member and a city council member. I tried to exchange pleasantries by saying, "Mr., how are you today?" The reply I received from this individual, who serves on the Parks Commission, was unexpected and it shows exactly why residents are hesitant to volunteer. After inquiring into this person's well-being, he replied, "I've been better." "I'm now on the elevator with you, Mrs. Doom and Gloom." When a person has this unprofessional behavior in front of a council member, how do you think he's going to respond on a city, on a city committee, when someone disagrees with him? I'm not questioning what process does the mayor have and use in selecting committee and commission members. From what I can tell is basically, if a person applies, it meets the residency requirements, that person is allowed to be appointed to the position. The city has on its website, "As a volunteer," we, meaning the city, "will strive to make sure your experience is as productive and rewarding as possible." Does being rewarded mean that you have to endure verbal attacks while you're in the community and coming to a council meeting? I believe that my encounter is an excellent example of why residents will not come forward to volunteer. I thank the council members who heard about this incidence and apologize for this gentleman, I use that lightly, on his behalf for his unprofessional behavior. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to comment on tonight's agenda? If you've none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk on the consent agenda are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the later portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, notification regarding next work session, consideration of groups on the river event request, and consideration of Walcraft salmon splash fishing tournament, consideration of a street closure, first congregational church, Founder's Day event. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Zalinski, supported by Councilmember Smith, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? So now, will you please take the roll? Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of establishing a project fund for the Lighthouse Park at the Manassie County Community Foundation. The citizen group working to reopen Lighthouse Park has requested the city set up a mechanism to receive donations for the ongoing maintenance of Lighthouse Park. By establishing a project fund at the Manassie County Community Foundation, the city can enable donors to easily support this cause. Is there a motion, take action?
I'll make that motion. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitlock, supported by Councilmember Smith, to approve the project fund for the Lighthouse Park. Is there any further discussion?
I'm just curious how long the Manassie County Community Foundation has been around? It's just a question. I don't know the answer to it.
Twenty, close to 20 years or more, I think. It's been a while.
Okay. At least. We've never had any problems with it. The funds have never been used for anything else, other than what they're designated for.
They have an outstanding reputation for what they do with their funds and making sure that they honor each of the funds and the reasons that they were set up. But there's never been any, any question.
I firstly have, I have a little thing about taking $250 for a service fee. That bothers me a little bit. But I want to support the people who want to raise the money and put forth the effort. I don't want to be a stand-in man way of that. I just, that just bothers me. I just don't like to take $250 or all the top and pay for administrative fees. Other than that, I want to support whatever they want to do and I commend them for it.
Do we know how many groups are, are holding their funds in the Manassie County Community Foundation?
I'm sorry.
Do we know how many groups are holding their funds that way?
Oh.
The foundation is, I think, open to looking at how you want to set up a fund. It's not just one strict set.
I can relate to, our church has a fund, there is money in the foundation. We can only spend it a certain way, they'll only give it to us a certain way, it's locked in. In other words, you can't take it out to go, totally untrue.
I believe the majority of them set up as endowment funds and they honor the setup however each of these funds. They work with whatever organization wants to set up a fund with them.
And they're all charged $250 a year?
I think it varies depending on what they're doing and how the fund's being set up. I can't answer the specifics.
I think the general feeling is doing it through the foundation fund adds a level of separation. There are people that have indicated they wouldn't be comfortable donating money to the city for the park maintenance, but they would through the foundation. They can get a half deduction either way, but just the cleaner accounting system. And as they apply, Councilman Zalinski indicated, the only way the money can be spent is for the specific purpose that is raised through the foundation.
Is that correct, Mr. Sarah?
Yes, I should indicate that I'm on the board of the community expectations or something of that kind. But there are numerous, numerous funds that are managed by the foundation. This makes one, I think, who we've all seen before council meeting doesn't actually.
Thank you.
I believe in the Schedule A of their agreement, it states how that money can be spent. On the purpose of the fund is to support the reopening and maintenance of Lighthouse Park in the city of Manassie. That's part of the agreement, part of what we're looking at. So that's the only way that money can be spent.
I just want to make, sorry I was late. Just a couple of comments, Bobby Rogers, Cross, someone, something more. But just quick comments on how we plan to raise, create a budget for like the next, I'd like to do 10 years though, we'll see what that budget is. But the goal is to raise, I don't know, I'm guessing $5,000, $6,000, something like that, for the next 10 years of maintenance and repairs, everything that said. And using the foundation allows us to ask, kind of as a 501(c)(3) from other organizations for their funds. So I think that's a lot of where it comes in. I know it's $250, I'd like to pay nothing, but I recognize that there's a fee to keep them going, so it is what it is. But it allows us to go to other organizations as kind of a 501(c)(3) and ask. So that's, I just wanted to comment on that.
I'll open you up to grants too.
I think so.
Same.
I've been so busy getting the park open that I haven't put a ton of time into this area, so we'll get there.
Thank you. You know, I commend the citizens who are doing this. And we've all been through fiscal budgets and know how it gets tighter and tighter for residents to do want to take this on and find funding to ensure that that park stays open. I think that is really a good thing for the city.
I understand it correctly, you're going to adopt that park, right, as a group? Through the Adopt a Park program?
Jeff just mentioned it to me, I'm hoping we can, I need to make sure I know what I'm committing to first. But that's the general opinion.
So any comments or questions? So now, will you please take the roll? Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Historic District Commission, Non-Motorized Transportation Committee, PEG Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. All appointments by the mayor are subject to council's approval unless otherwise specified by statute or ordinance. Nominations for council appointments do not require second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council shall vote on the nomination. A majority vote in favor of placement of the nominee is required for appointment. The following applications have been received. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has two vacancies, one term ending 6/30/19 and one partial term ending 6/30/18. Applicants must be a city resident or person with interest in a property in the city. This is a mayoral appointment. We had one applicant, Jeffrey Steady of 286 Fourth Avenue. I'd like to appoint Mr. Steady to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the term ending 6/30/19.
Make a motion to accept Jeffrey Steady's application, 286 Fourth Avenue, for a term ending 6/30/19. Do you need support? Yes, support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Smith, supported by Councilmember Zalinski, to approve Jeff Steady of 286 Fourth Avenue to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, term ending 6/30/19. Is there any further discussion? You please take the roll? Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Compensation Commission, two vacancies, no applicants. Downtown Development Authority, one vacancy, no applicants. Historic District Commission, one vacancy, no applicants. The Non-Motorized Transportation Committee, three vacancies, no applicants. PEG Commission, three vacancies, no applicants. Zoning Board of Appeals, one vacancy, one term ending 5/31/18. It's a mayoral appointment. We had one applicant, Glenn C. Zaring of 321 Fifth Street. I would like to appoint Mr. Zaring to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term ending 5/31/18.
Motion. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Zalinski, supported by Councilmember Smith, to appoint Glenn Zaring of 321 Fifth Street to the Zoning Board of Appeals, the term ending 5/31/18. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank Mr. Zaring, he's on another board and he's taken on some more responsibility. We appreciate it.
Please take the roll. Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Next we'll move on to notices, communications, and announcements. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we will hear from Ms. Maureen Berry, who will report on the activities of the Planning Commission and respond to any questions.
Good evening. As the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, it's my pleasure to give you this update of our annual activities. I'd like to, did this thing to work? I'd like to begin with the requests that we handled this year. We had four parcel splits and combinations that we recommended to city council for approval. And they are listed on your slide. We approved a request for architectural compatibility. This allows Jim Snellenberger and Kim Coyle to build a detached garage with the same roof pitch as their existing home at 381 Sixth Street. A major emphasis this year has been our master plan update. About a year ago, we contracted with the county planning department to help us finish the plan. Last fall, we held some public input sessions and from those, we developed goals and tasks that we incorporated into the plan. We had our final draft ready for review at our April 6th Planning Commission meeting and submitted it to city council for review at their May 5th meeting. Council approved this on May 17th. We are now in the middle of a 63-day review and comment period. And at the end of that period, the public hearing is scheduled for August 4th. We also endorsed two plans this year. The County Parks and Recreation Plan, and the city plan is included within the county plan, and the Little Manassie River Watershed Plan. This year, we considered three special use permits. The first was Beth's Drug Rehabilitation, 900 Vine Street, and that's the old Civic Club. We approved a mixed-use medical and dental office and public assembly with eating and drinking. The Beth's Drug has already completed the parking lot renovations that were required by this permit. The second one was a minor modification to the Jocelyn Cove Special Use Permit. This is a reduction in size from three stories, elevation from three stories to two stories, and then a reduction in the size of the living units, from 2750 square foot to 1850 square foot. Lastly, was the Edgewater Plan Unit Development at the former River Park Place site. This allows for 18 residential condominiums and two tenant commercial spaces. We also considered a street vacation request. This is the undeveloped portion of Duffy Street between Monroe and Grove. And the property will be divided proportionally among the three adjoining property owners. We participated in two training sessions this year. The first was on form-based coding and the second was the Manassie County Sign Regulation Workshop. Excuse me. By participating in this training, those commissioners who are master citizen planner certified are able to maintain that certification. I'd like to thank the other members of the Planning Commission for their dedication and service. Erin Bennett, Ray Fortier, Marlene McBride, who's the secretary, Gabriel Walker, Mark Whitlock, and Roger Yoder, who's our chair. I'd like to invite you to our meetings, they're open to the public and they're on the first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM. And the agenda and minutes are available on the city webpage. And does anyone have any questions?
You do a fine job.
I thank you.
Thank you. We'll also hear from Ms. Denise Blakesley, who will report on activities as the planning and zoning administrator.
Good evening. Actually, it's been a little less than a year because I gave my last annual report in November and my report time had been changed, so this is about six months of activity for my part. Since November, I've issued 12 land use permits, including two sign permits, five fence permits, one home occupation permit, and issued seven violation letters. And under the RRC program, one of the things we do do is we have customer survey services. These are sent out to everybody who has done a request for a detailed site plan or a medium-sized site plan. So we do get some input back from citizens who have gone through our process. I administer the rental program for the city with Team Spicer. They do an excellent job. I want to thank Pat Bentley, Wendy Carey, and John Middleton, and Mark Meason. It has been a real benefit to have Mark working with the Spicer group for the inspections. It really helps the process move along. He brings all of his years of experience with him to Team Spicer. On the 2015 cycle one inspections, we have over 98% complete. They're currently working on cycle two. About 63% of the units have been inspected and almost 40% of those have been completed. Cycle three will be done in 2017. I'm one of the two webpage administrators for the city, it's myself and Mr. Bradford. Since January, when we've launched the new website, I've met with Century 21, Kohler Baker, Lighthouse Realty, and RE/MAX. This is a great investment in my time. The realtors have access to information on where to find it when I'm not in the office. It also gives them more information on where to find services for new property owners. I'm also meeting with the Senior Center on June 19th, I mean July 19th, and we're going to go through where they can find information on the website. Meetings. I'm staff liaison to the Historic District Commission, Planning Commission, Non-Motorized Transportation Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I do want to take a moment and thank those that do volunteer. We have great volunteers, I love working with them, I have good boards and commissions, and they really do provide a wonderful service to the city. I'm also the reporting secretary for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. I also serve on the County Educational Steering Committee, the Main Street DDA. I serve on the Design Committee and Economic Restructuring Committee. And I am also attending the SET Program meetings on behalf of the city. Training. This past year, I've attended a recreational grant workshop. I did the same citizen planner training that the planning commissioners do that maintains my certification. I attended an Understanding Pilots workshop this past month. And I will be attending the Michigan Association of Planners Conference in October. The master plan, Marine RV Touch Base, but they did an amazing job. We have taken all of the public input session information. We have developed our goals and objectives, started working, got our action plan done. We have worked on our future land use. And that public hearing is scheduled for August 4th. And I just renoticed that in the paper, just to want more people to know when it is so that people can come and have their input at that meeting. The RRC program, we have three remaining items. One of them is the updating of the city master plan. Within that plan is the Downtown Strategic Plan. The RRC program have reviewed that language and meets all of their criteria. So once the master plan is adopted by city council, those two criteria will be taken care of. The remaining item then is a zoning audit. I have spoken with the RRC. Since we have already, we have not asked them for any funding. The zoning audit, there is a cost for that, but they have taken the work we've done to date and used that as their, meeting their criteria, they will cover the cost for that zoning audit. Clearzoning began that review about two weeks ago. So with that, we will hopefully receive our certification, I'm hoping before the end of the year. And we'll have met Goal 1.6 of this yours to change to plan. And I really think everybody has appreciated how beautiful the lighthouse looks. It has been amazing. Steve Harold's done a wonderful job. But I really want to thank Ken Cummings, Steve, and Larry from 3D Laser Advantage. They went and they digitized the entire lighthouse. When the city acquired the lighthouse, we know that it is not going to be barrier-free for people to get inside. So one of the components of getting that lighthouse through the park service was a way of giving a tour of the lighthouse. I spoke to Ken Cummings at a meeting about the situation. He got real excited and then I told him, "Ken, it's a great project, we have no money." But Ken, Steve, and Larry did all this pro bono. They did not charge us a dime for it. And we take you on this little tour that is now available on the city website. It's also on the museum website. And this will actually show you the lighthouse. And this was before it was painted, so you're going to see the old rust bucket, but it's still really cool. So they used to drone to fly over the catwalk and around the outside of the lighthouse. It actually takes you inside. It shows how it feels when you walk in the door. But you'll see the interior still is as it looks on the inside right now. So I know the next thing that Steve is going to be working on is getting the funding to get the interior completed. We had more structural costs to get the exterior of the building completed than we had anticipated. So we will be going back, looking for some more grant funds and everything in order to get the interior of the thing done, get all of the restoration of the project done. In this video here, you can link to it from our city website and again, the museum website. And I will tell you, it is an amazing view. Let me get out on a little branding on the town. And does anybody have any questions?
You do a great job Denise. Nearly all of you, all your committees.
Thank you. Denise, I just want to thank you for always being able to answer my questions when I call. That's what I'm here for.
Thank you very much.
Move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizen attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who would like to comment? Yes, please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Mary Riker. I live at 166 Ford Street, over on the north side. And I came here tonight because I'd like to ask the city council and the mayor to please consider limiting the way the fireworks are done throughout the summer. Perhaps, no fireworks till 8:30 at night and then let people blow a few till midnight or something. But day and night has been really impossible to deal with. And making it even non-holidays to have a noise ordinance go till 11:00 PM is really hard. I'm new with my pets, it's hard on people who get up early for a job. And it's hard just on people that don't want to be hearing the booms and bangs day and night. I imagine there are some veterans who've been to Afghanistan and don't want to be listening to bombs going off all the time. There's no, during the day when people blow them off, there's no pretty visuals, they aren't fun fireworks, they're just ground-shaking bombs. And there, nothing fun about them except for the person to light all the bang, you know? Good for them, but not so good for the rest of us. I came here tonight because I had another concern. Two burning embers landed at my friend's house and my friend was too shy to call the police or anything. I went over to visit and one of the burning pieces fell right in their sitting area where their son is always playing. And right behind that area is an outdoor channel where their dogs live. So this burning, flaming thing came down and landed right there in their sitting area. Then a second burning, flaming thing came down, ricocheted off their window, landed in the wet part of their yard. It could have landed on the house itself, you know, the wooden siding, which is old and dry and been in a drought. So it's dangerous and I walked around the neighborhood to see who could have possibly done it, thinking maybe there's some people that just don't know that their stuff is sparking. So I found the neighbors that I think did it and they were drunk as skunks and they were hostile as anything, and threatened me and the police. and they were hostile as anything, and threatened me and the police. Who needs it? So the chronic being blown up all the time fireworks, I really think some of the stuff that's just going off day and night, it's the same few houses. And in my neighborhood, it's a mother who's always screaming at her kids. The screaming went on Saturday night till after midnight, shrieking, screaming, yelling. And then Sunday night, when I called and asked if something could be done about the noise, I was told, well, just luckily you don't live in a country where it's twenty-four seven. But all day till late at night is really too much for most people. Some people can enjoy themselves, but it's at the neighbor's expense. Now around the block for me, there's a person that just blows them every day, over and over, tons and tons of them. It's noisy and upsetting. My dogs and I can't relax in the yard, ever. Not that we have five minutes here and there, but ever. And so these people shriek. And I went around the next day, and there's litter all over the street. The neighbor across the street went and kicked the garbage back into their yard. And he was really sick of it too. If there could just, I guess the thing I'm asking here is for some kind of limits to be drawn around the fireworks. So the people who enjoy them can have a blast, but the rest of us can have a blast too. By the time I walked down to the beautiful city display on the Fifth Avenue beach, I waited for about an hour, and so many personal fireworks went off that I thought, my dogs aren't going to last. I went home and I missed the city display, which is the one I love. The city display is wonderful. It's not too many people in the country that can go and sit on a beach and watch fireworks. I just love that. But when there's been five hundred bombs going off beforehand, I can't go because my dogs are a basket case. The last thing I'd like to do, if I have permission, is to, I have some phone pictures of the littered yard, which isn't cleaned up yet. It just looks like a big trash pit. Quick thing, the north side, all the rest of the people I know, garden, they have new siding on their houses. Everybody's so loving in that neighborhood, wants to make that neighborhood fantastic. And I chose it when I moved here, and I adore the north side. It's a piece of heaven. And to let somebody just trash it is a shame. It's too bad. If I have permission, may I please show my photo to somebody?
You can leave it with our city manager.
I have to email it to you or something. It's in my phone.
Yeah, he can ensure that he can pass it on to the council.
Okay, thank you. Thanks a lot.
So anyone else? Yes, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Carol Burba, and I'm the president of the Manistee Civic Players. I reside at PO Box one one three in Irons, Michigan. I'd like to read a letter that we drafted, we being the Manistee Civic Players. Our Manistee Civic Players Board of Directors voted unanimously to pledge our support to the newly formed Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. The RRCA recently took over management of the historic Ramsdale Theater Building, home of the Manistee Civic Players since nineteen thirty-nine. The Manistee Civic Players Board is excited to see such a dynamic group of individuals working to ensure the sustainability of the beautiful Ramsdale Theater and cultural arts in the Manistee community. The past few years have seen many changes, and we have all worked diligently to continue our longstanding history of providing a thriving theater program in the Manistee area. At the June MCP board meeting, members applauded and supported the mission of the new nonprofit. They discussed ways to collaborate and support the efforts of the RRCA to ensure success. We pledge to share our membership with the RRCA in a partnership effort to expand our financial and volunteer support to those who have shown an interest in the arts. Our board members will work alongside the RRCA to grow cultural arts programming, work on fundraising, increase volunteerism, and offer extensive theater production experience. The Manistee Civic Players formed in nineteen thirty-nine and is the first and only local theater group to ever call the Ramsdale home. Plans are underway for an eighty-year celebration of the milestone to be held in two thousand nineteen. Through the years, the MCP has managed the facility and been a regular contributor to the preservation and operation of the Ramsdale. We have a rich history at the Ramsdale Theater. Many families in our community, including our own board members, have had several generations of family members perform on the stage. Some well-known actors had their start on the Ramsdale stage, including James Earl Jones and Tony Trucks, as well as everyday people inspired by the Ramsdale experience. Our board is thrilled by the commitment of the RRCA to make sure these longstanding traditions continue in the Manistee region. The Manistee Civic Players, a vibrant seventy-seven-year-old civic organization, wants to tell you that we intend to maintain our Board of Directors and our five oh one C three nonprofit status in an effort to uphold our pledge to service to the community. Now would any of you who are fiscally sound or a successful business owner turn over your money and resources to another entity that has no answers as to how they would run your life or business? No matter how successful you've been in life or business, this new entity tells you that they're going to run your life or business from now on. What would your reaction be? We, the MCP, in our seventy-seven-year proven track record of producing plays and musicals on the Ramsdale Theater stage, feel offended. We applaud the RRCA. We too love the Ramsdale. We want to negotiate a lease with the RRCA. We're ready to share our volunteers, share in fundraising, sit on RRCA committees, offer our expertise. But imagine our dismay when we were originally told no. It's our way or nothing by an RRCA board member. Now the RRCA says, sure, we'll negotiate, but we don't think you can afford it. Well, why would the RRCA want to kick us out? Does the RRCA think that there are other organizations out there ready to jump in and offer quality community theater? Why do we have to abandon our five oh one C three? The RRCA has a mongous task at hand, and we think that this organization was hurried into accepting this responsibility. The RRCA should have been given a year's time to develop their infrastructure, strategies, and a business plan. Thank you.
So anyone else who'd like to comment? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address.
This is Glenn Zaring, three twenty-one Fifth Street. First, thank you very much for accepting my request to serve the Zoning Board of Appeals. I wanted to mention, following the ladies speaking about the fireworks, I'm a member of the Benzey Bear Lake Cert team, the Community Emergency Response Team. And we have responsibility for some security down at the beach just to keep people back from the fireworks area. And I noticed with all the Japanese lanterns that were going off, those are always a serious concern of mine. Well, one actually came down about thirty meters away from me. So I went over to it just to see over there, pick it up, remove the tracks. There were still hot embers and coals inside it. And again, if it had fallen on some more dry grass, it could have been a problem. So I'm not even sure how to address that, but I would like to make support for, let's say, responsible use of some of these fireworks, because particularly right now, that's not a good thing. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Judy Crackett, and we own the home of two forty, or two fifty Hughes Street, Manistee. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you for a moment about the Ramsdale Theater and the current activity. I applaud city council for trying to find a long-term solution for the care of the historic Ramsdale Theater. It's a jewel in Manistee County, and at Rivals Theaters we've seen in Chicago, Toronto, and other cities around the country, and it must be cared for. I do question, however, the haste in which the recent decision was made to turn over the building to the newly formed RRCA without any consultation with the two entities that have occupied and cared for the building for years. The concept of a one Ramsdale sounds good at face value, but getting there is going to take more than simply saying that this is the way it's going to be. The Manistee Civic Players was formed seventy-seven years ago, and their board is talking about plans for an eighty-year birthday celebration. They have been the only community theater group to call the Ramsdale home. During their near eighty-year affiliation with the Ramsdale, they have been the one constant. During the good years and during the bad years, during the ups and during the downs, through various owners and various management, the Manistee Civic Players has adapted, given, supported, cared for, and worked to keep the building open and viable. They have hosted tours, held productions, raised money, cleaned, repaired, managed, operated, and loved the Ramsdale Theater. The Civic Players supported and orchestrated much of the renovation and the restoration of that building. Generations of families have been part of the Civic Player production as actors, volunteers, building sets, making costumes, providing music, lighting, sound, selling tickets, ushering, and much more. I brought my daughter to see her first production at the Ramsdale at the age of four, and we saw Annie. And this past December, going to give my age away, I brought her daughter, my granddaughter, now aged four, to see her first production, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. The production was one of the finest I have seen on that Ramsdale stage. And my granddaughter said, it was amazing. And she talks about it today. One of the most memorable and fun experiences in my life was performing on the Ramsdale stage alongside Sarah Helby and the Civic Players Director, Joanne Muma, and numerous others during the production of Nonsense. Then Director Ron Steinberg stretched my comfort level to the point that I was singing solo on the stage, dressed as a nun, dressed in western wear, way outside my comfort level, and so much more. And we had so much fun. Local community theater touches the people in our community in ways many of us will never know or appreciate. And in Manistee County, the Manistee Civic Players has been the provider of theater experiences, entertainment, wing stretching, friend-making, comfort zone breaking, and life-changing for nearly eighty years. So when I learned that the RRCA and the one Ramsdale concept developed by another group of individuals whom I believe genuinely care about the Ramsdale Theater, and learned that they drew up a plan without any input from the Manistee Civic Players or the Manistee Art Institute that has been providing service to our community for the past twenty years or more, and that both groups were basically asked to dissolve and turn over their assets or else. I'm disheartened by the tone and by the potential outcome. These longstanding, successful boards were given a copy of a new plan via email in late April just prior to their monthly meetings. And two weeks later, at another board meeting where the RRCA was present, when a member of the Civic Players asked the RRCA about discussing options, they were told, there's nothing to discuss, yes or no. Who doesn't? Are you in or are you out? The city wants one group. That's what they were told. So it's basically, turn your organization over to us, turn over your assets, or else we will raise your rent to a level you cannot afford. You will no longer be part of the Ramsdale Theater. The RRCA believes the one Ramsdale concept is the only option for long-term care of the Ramsdale building. Board members of the Art Institute and the Civic Players understood that they will no longer have full control of their productions and their finances. They'll be offered the opportunity to sit on a committee, but the Civic Players and the Art Institute would no longer exist. The RRCA would select and manage the productions and anything and everything else that would take place in the building. Board members have talked about hearing remarks such as, if the Civic Players don't get on board, I'll put the stage in mothballs. We'll put in mothballs over a sleigh bell weekend when we do our musicals.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
I'm just about done. So that. The Manistee does not have enough talent to put on Joseph. I'm so embarrassed by the production, I won't act on the stage again. I find it offensive that the RRCA would approach these longstanding organizations and without participation in any discussion or joint planning, present such a concept. The arrogance of the newly formed RRCA without the Civic Players will produce better shows, make more money, and better funding care for the Ramsdale is beyond belief. To add insult, the RRCA has retained, and I understand housed, the very director the city hired three years ago to run the Ramsdale at a total
Fifteen seconds, please.
Costs over a hundred eighty thousand dollars, who lost money in the fight of the seven events he did. So in the spirit of cooperation, respect, and transparency is necessary and expected for an organization to be successful, and it's necessary for the Ramsdale Theater to be successful. And I'm sorry, everyone's full. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to comment? Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and address.
Yes, Eric Petolsky, one fifty-nine Quincy Street. I had a couple of topics, but I also want to comment on this presentation we just heard about the Ramsdale Theater. Because it's about time the Civic Players heard that there's a lot of residents in this common tax period are offended by their attitude as well. Number one, who benefited the most when Ramsdale Theater has been losing massive money, millions of dollars of tax period dollars being subsidized in that facility? They recorded a profit on their corporation. So it's about time that, what I'm hearing tonight is, oh, we support the new board as long as it doesn't affect us. I'm certain they don't want to have, negotiate new rental agreements with the board because they receive massive under-market value rent. So it's about time that both sides of the story is heard, and I'm glad they're here this evening when I'm here. The second thing is, is I would like to recommend that the city add Michigan Tax Form forty-six forty-three to the website. This is an exception to rescinding the primary property exemption. As all you know, I have been accused in April of property tax fraud. And even worse, certain board members or council members were accused of participating in that fraud, or in fraud, I should say. The fact is, no fraud occurred. It's verifiable by contacting assessors' office and the county treasurer's office. However, a few individuals, very few, but even one individual who's here, present in this audience this evening, contributed to those false claims. This week, I received a letter, my wife did, from the county regarding our property. So I went to see the property, so I went to see the county treasurer. And I feel that since council members have been brought into this picture, they deserve a status on my property as well. Since the deed of my property was properly filed in two thousand and fifteen, and since there is no documentation bearing my signature as ever requesting a property tax exemption on that property, my property has no prior tax liability adjustment due on it. None. Next one. Opinions are formed by people who visit Manistee by what they see on US thirty-one. Last week, the ADS had an open house soliciting comments about what they can do to improve the appearance of US thirty-one. And I was there, and I spent some time there, listening to comments being made. One comment was very interesting. An individual coincidentally went up there and said, you know, I would have never stopped in Manistee, Michigan, if it hadn't been that I needed to get the tire fixed on my car. The comment went on, what good is it to have nice beaches if the approach to the beaches is undesirable and people drive right past your town? Good comment. Now, I was out of town most of the Fourth of July weekend. I came back in town, and I want to say the Department of Public Works did a very good job, I think, trying to clean up the city in a one-day period as far as US thirty-one. However, I don't think it should be a one-day task. Thirty-one should be kept groomed all summer long. I think that unfortunately, a lot of the properties along thirty-one are now privately held with tall grass still remaining. I think the city should be putting in the tax bill coming this December, when it's issued, a notification to all the property owners of the city ordinance. Keep your lawns mowed, or you will feel the consequences by the city charging you to have it mowed. That does not mean the Department of Public Works needs to mow the property. The city should be contracting a service to have it done. The city can make money off this, charging the homeowner more money than pays for the service. My nephew does it for the, for City of Muskegon. My nephew does it for the, for City of Muskegon, and they effectively keep their lawns a little bit neater than we have right now. So with that, I guess I will say thank you, but I would like to see 31 kept up a little bit neater year-on than what it has been in the past. Thank you.
So anyone else who'd like to comment? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Mary Alisley. I am not a resident of Manistee. I am from 13620 Beaver Pond Road in Empire. I am here representing the Northwest Michigan Invasive Species Network. We are a partnership of over forty committed partners, including the Manistee Conservation District, Grand Traverse County Conservation District, Leland County Conservation District, and Benzey Conservation District. We are going to be seeking the approval and permission from the city to treat an invasive species on the Veterans Drive, Veterans Oak Grove Drive. It's called Japanese knotweed. It is super aggressive and causes potential risk to our roads and our infrastructure. So I'm hoping that for the next city council meeting, I can be on the agenda, make a short presentation about Japanese knotweed, and get permission to treat this kind of thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who'd like to comment?
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Chris DeMoe. I resided at 119 Washington Street in Manistee. Been a resident for this area for twenty years. I've always used the boat launch facilities, fish cleaning station, that area. Over the Fourth of July weekend, you know, you guys make us buy the seasonal boat pass and everything, and I went and got my boat down there. First one off the lake, first one to the boat dock, last one out of the boat ramp. Reason why is, you got these people parking down there, they have no boat trailers, they have no reason to be in down there. They were blocked off from where the pay box is, all the way down to the handicap. Too wide, nobody wants to move to get, let these people get these boat trailers and get their boats out of the water so we can decongesting, decongesting traffic down there. I'm looking around, people are getting hostile down there because nobody wants to move. And I'm looking around, I just noticed the police department right there at Cherry Street. Meanwhile, I do another tape, and some words were said, some people, they're getting hostile down there. I look again for the police department, but the police department's gone. Nobody down there. About a half hour waiting around, the guy, the gentleman next to me who's backing down his, he got a beautiful fine-tuned boat and trailer, and he backs down there, he can't, didn't have enough room to even back down to his boat, ends up jackknifing his trailer, screwing up his trailer, trying to get around this track? Ridiculous. So finally, I did manage to get out of there, hour and a half, almost two hours later. Come to find out, the gentleman that let me out was an off-duty, out-of-town police officer. I caught up to him later at Myers at the gas station. And he says, I said, I appreciate you decongesting that for me, because all it took, it took one person, is to figure out, hey, you stopped this traffic coming in here, people are going to move out. So that's what he did. He stopped the traffic right there, just passed around about, because when I left last, I knew the traffic was almost down past around about coming back to Cherry. So he let me out, we got, went out there. I end up catching one of the, what is that, that fancy little scooter boo-boo they got there, that scooter Polaris, over on Spruce and First Street, after I already had cleared out of there. There were still people waiting, locals around here that had been down there to the beach and stuff, still waiting to get out. What they did is they evacuated the beer tent area first. Really? You're just gonna put the drums out on the road? So with that being said, go get the boat ramp sticker. I come down to this fancy nice marina we have down here, I open the front doors, I walk in into a banquet. I'm looking for a boat sticker, this is a marina, I got a banquet, ain't that why we invested all this money in the Ramstel? Just really pissed board management and waste of taxpayers' money. Really? We had bathrooms down, we had ten bathrooms down at the fish cleaning station down there around that area, men and women. What have we got now, two, three? Those bathrooms, yeah, they were all, they were outdated. People, people liked that spot because people would come off the boats, they'd run up there to that little concession stand right there where the bathrooms are, they'd do their business, get some food, run back down in the boat, get back on off the lake. A lot of people don't like that no more. I don't know how much, our, our revenues come down through the boat ramps, because I remember getting the boat ramp stickers in the three to four hundred numbers. This year it was a hundred and thirty-five or a hundred and thirty-eight. Just ridiculous. I don't know what, what has happened here. Are we losing, are we losing, people don't want to come back here because they can't get to their boats, get to their boat trailers, want to go clean up fishing. People are cleaning fishing on the freaking docks down there because they can't get to the fish cleaning station. Just ridiculous. I hope for next year we have a better plan on this thing. I don't know what more I can say. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Anyone else who'd like to comment?
Bobby Rogers-Crawls, I'm a sudden heart, I'm gonna follow all that with a compliment. Sorry. I just wanted to really compliment DPW Parks, specifically Jeff Thad, Councilmember Zalinski, Councilmember Smith, on all the help on the parks that they got. Just to give a quick recap, we started Tuesday, two weeks ago on Tuesday, and we worked eleven days straight and got the park open. My husband was actually there, we did the grand opening at two, and he was actually there in the morning finishing up some detailed painting to get it one-hundred percent ready. But I just want to give a big compliment to these guys. It was a lot of work, it was hard work. We got it done, there was a couple roadblocks that could have stopped us, but we went forward with it, and I'm really proud of it. I don't know if everyone has been down to see the new park, reopened park, but it's beautiful. It hasn't looked this nice in twenty years. So I just want to give a big thank you, and it's open. And I, every time I drove by, I live right around the corner for the Fourth of July, actually when Public Works came, or the parks came, and we whipped and removed the fence Friday morning about eleven-ish or whatever, ten, eleven, there were people in it nonstop all day before, even before we did the official grand opening at two. So every time I drove by all weekend, there was like, you know, anytime twenty to thirty people in it. So it made me feel really happy to see it, and the hard work was worth it. And I just want to say thank you again to everyone.
Anyone else who'd like to comment? See now, we'll move out officially.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Is it your turn?
No, Your Honor.
Oh, I'm sorry, good.
Yes, I'm sorry, I almost missed my turn. My name is Michael Carl. I resided at 159 Quincy Street during the summer months, and I would like to thank you, Merrick Kenny, and council members for giving me the chance to talk. The reason I'm here is to address the topic of professionalism. I believe that as community leaders, you and your committee members should behave in a professional manner. Unfortunately, I have to address an issue that resided, or that happened in this building in the elevator not long ago when Mr. Quinn addressed my wife in a condescending and unprofessional manner. I believe that this probably was a rare exception, and I'm hoping that this will not happen again. As little children, we learn to just blur things out, and that's not surprising. But as we become adults, we develop a filter between our thoughts and what comes out of our mouth, and it is unfortunate that Mr. Quinn apparently has not developed this filter. As you go about filling your vacancies for your committee members, I would hope that you keep my comments in mind. Thank you very much.
Here are county members of council. City Manager Ed Taylor asked me to come up and give a little bit of an update on the Ramstel Regional Center for the Arts. There were some members of the Civic Players here tonight that expressed some comments. Where we're at is that the MAI has submitted a letter that says they're not interested in joining the One Ramstel, and that they're going to be pursuing other avenues. The Ramstel Regional Center for the Arts is committed to working with them to the extent that they want to use the Ramstel for art shows or classes or what have you. And we'll be having conversations with them towards that end so that they can, we can go about our separate ways, since that's what they've chosen to do. There is a meeting scheduled for July eleventh for some members of the Ramstel Regional Center for the Arts Board with the Civic Players Board to continue the discussions. Jackie Carnet, I'm not sure if she's on the Civic Players Board, but certainly is involved with them, is a member of the Ramstel Regional Center for the Arts, and she's been a conduit of information between the two organizations, as well as I know a number of the Ramstel Regional Center for the Arts Board members have had conversations with Civic Player Board members. So that conversation will happen on July eleventh, to continue that dialogue to see, you know, where they want to go. The Civic Players did issue a press release, which was sent to the RRC but was not received, but we got it through the press release, and it was a little bit ambiguous to some of the members of the board as to actually what their intentions were, so that's the reason for the meeting on July eleventh. Thank you.
Hi, Megan Zoumi. Councilmember Bean.
Well, I just want to say, I had a really good time this Fourth of July weekend. I enjoyed the parade, I enjoyed the clown band, of course, down at the beach. I want to add some comments about the parking situation between the fair and the boaters who were trying to get their empty trailers to, to the boat launch to pick up their boats. It did cause quite a bit of congestion. I want to thank Glenn Zaring, who was there on, looked like a golf cart, he was trying to help out a little bit because we had a real bottleneck right at that opening for one poor soul who was trying to get his trailer out and down to the boat launch. And it did, it did, people were warm, they wanted to get in their cars, they wanted to get going, but we did have quite a bit of a jam there. So if we can maybe smooth that out for future events, that would be extremely helpful, because I do think that fishing is vitally important, and I think that's why we have the, we have the advantage of having these wonderful boat launches now. Other than that, I thought it was a great weekend for weather. The parade was wonderful, it was, it was well-received for people that I talked to. And I thank the DPW for all their hard work. I know that they worked very hard that Friday to get ready for that, and they continue to work hard. Thanks.
What's members' thoughts?
Well, I just want to thank, again, the DPW workers. Brandon for the Lighthouse Park, he kind of led that project, he did a really good job. I also want to thank everybody who spoke tonight. I work for you, and I need to hear from you, and I do appreciate everything that you say, and I do listen and take it to heart. And I would encourage anyone who has anything to say about how the city's run to step forward like you did in speak, and I thank you again.
Councilmember Smith?
I would like to share the same sentiments with councilman, member Zalinski. I think all the speakers that are here tonight, it's nice to see a full room, it's nice to hear what people have on their mind. It's good to hear the positives and the negatives, to consider where we are going forward to make improvement in the city. The public works staff that assisted with Lighthouse Park in preparation of the city for the weekend, for all of our visitors. Public Safety, who was directing traffic, stuff trying to get through the congestion. I will admit, parking seemed to be an issue. People parked on grass, people were parked in a lot of places that typically doesn't allow parking, and I think that created part of the congestion. People had backed into spots by the softball field in a possible form to get straight back out and go in the correct direction. So there are some issues we can probably learn from and go forward on. Bobby, thank you for your leadership and your enthusiasm for Lighthouse Park, that was absolutely remarkable.
Councilmember Littler?
I just have a couple things. First one is, I want to thank Officer Van Sickle, Frank Kobyak, and Tribal Officer Split. During the commotion over the weekend with the absconders, broke into our car, beer tent, and they caught him. They, the officers were professional, helped us out. And thank you, Chief, for your team. And the other is the fireworks, and this writer brought up. It's something that I believe we should review again. Last time, I thought we had a, we were gonna have a motion passed on the fireworks, but there was no second, which is a little bit ticked off about. I think we need to revisit this again. There's a lot of veterans and older folks and animals that, it's just, it's killing. So we really need to think about this.
I would be happy to support revisiting that. Well, but, okay, I would, if it takes two people, I would, I would support doing it.
Well, as, as one of, we'll maybe bring it back up.
That's what I'm saying.
So you will need to put it back on the work session. I can't. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank our entire city staff, our DPW and Public Safety. I think they did a tremendous job getting the city ready and seeing the city through Forest Festival. Everywhere you went, there was a tremendous amount of people, kept cheering, everywhere from down to the facilities downtown, to the art show downtown, that they've seen more people than they've seen in a long time. And to come off with, as well as it has, is a, is kudos to our city staff. So I appreciate all their hard work that went into it. And with that, I will take the motion.
Motion, Chief.
Your turn.